You're anxious tonight, Derek.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 1st, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting, and I'd like to welcome everyone for joining us tonight. If I'd like to ask those who would like to join the council myself in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand with us.
(Inaudible)
I forgot a little housekeeping note here. Council members Batiste and Winterstein are excused this evening. The first item on our agenda is Special Business, ID 0341, Substance Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. I'd like to invite Influence the Choice Chair, Jerry Blackburn, and friends and members of the Youth Opposed to Drug Abuse Advisory Board to join me at the lectern for the proclamation. Whereas many of our young people do not develop the skills needed to productively go through adolescence substance-free, and whereas substance use prevention has a greater impact than later intervention by changing a child's early life path away from maladaptive solution and towards positive, healthy behaviors and productivity, and whereas by stopping the drug use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction and create stronger neighborhoods in this community. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Substance Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Issaquah, and call upon citizens to join me in engaging inappropriate programs and activities to promote comprehensive substance abuse prevention efforts in our community. Jerry, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely.
Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, City Council. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jerry Blackburn. I have the honor of being the current Chair of Influence the Choice, and I just want to introduce Katie. Katie Mueller is our Special Projects Coordinator, and she really does all the work with the Yoda Group, and then Yoda will take it from there. So Katie? Would you like to say hi?
Hi, I'm Katie Mueller, and I have the honor of working with these fine young students behind you, and I will let them introduce themselves.
Good evening, Mayor Polly and members of the City Council. My name is Morgan.
My name is David.
My name is Brooke.
My name is Noah.
And my name is Alex.
We are members of Yoda, Youth Opposed to Drug Abuse, the youth voice for Influence the Choice Drug Prevention Alliance for Youth. We would like to express our gratitude to the City of Issaquah for always supporting and encouraging the efforts of Yoda and Influence the Choice, and tonight specifically for recognizing the work that we do proclaiming October as Substance Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to start a meeting with such a big, young group. Thank you all for coming. The next item on the agenda this evening is Audience Comments. Audience members may address the council at this time, and we put the guidelines for public participation up on the overhead if you need to take a look at that before you join at the podium. Those who signed up on the speakers list will be called up first, and if you didn't get a chance to sign up, I will ask for other speakers before I close this portion of the meeting. If you're here as part of a group, can you identify yourself as the group that you are speaking for? And those in the audience here this evening that want to express support for any of our guests that are speaking this evening, please raise your hand so council gets an understanding of the level of support and interest in the comments that we're receiving. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening? Yes, Russell Joe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council. My name is Russell Joe. Business address is 1600 127th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue. I'm a municipal manager and relationship manager for Republic Services, and I'm here tonight because Republic Services handles garbage and recycling responsibilities for an area directly south of Issaquah's border. We also have the contract for Sammamish and for Bellevue, and our trucks also roll through I-90 on their way to North Bend. So there's a significant transportation impact on your community, and I wanted to reach out to you and let you know that I'm available if there are any issues or problems with our drivers or any of our personnel at all. My direct phone number is 425-646-2541, and reach out to me at all hours of the day and night if there's an issue, and I'm happy to assist with any issues that might arise. The second reason I'm up here today is I wanted to make you aware that this room here, most business days, is also our municipal court. And when I was on the council between 2000 and 2008, we worked to pull our court from the district court system, the King County District Court system, and we made our own municipal court. And part of the reason we did that was we wanted to increase the level of service to our community members and make sure we were more responsive to the community's needs in terms of community placement, release for our people, for defendants on bond and release. I had the pleasure of serving as your pro temp municipal judge for a couple of years, and it was a great honor to do that. I know how much pressure there is when you do that, and I wanted to point out to you that the King County Bar Association, I think in April, put out a judicial survey of judicial officers, and Scott Stewart, our municipal judge, was rated in that survey, and it can be found at kingkcb.org, and you can look at the 2018 Judicial Officer Survey. And when I looked it over, and you can come to your own conclusion, but when I looked it over, Judge Stewart came out quite well, or very highly rated, by the people that were in front of him. And the people that come in front of him are typically the lawyers that will appear in court with Scott Stewart, and so he's really kind of a peer-to-peer or direct contact and service level evaluation when he does that. So I'd encourage you to look at it, just so you can see how well the court is working, and you can reach out to Judge Stewart and let him know that he's doing a good job, if that's the conclusion that you come to as well. Finally, I'd just like to thank you, all of you electeds, for doing what you do. As I said, I served eight years, and I know the trials and tribulations you go through and the stress you go through, and it's all worth it in the end because our community really appreciates it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Is there anyone else signed up? I think it's awesome that he was a former council member and Judge Pro Tem as well, but if I can get you to hold your applause, that would be great. Thanks. And thank you, Russell. You're awesome. Okay, next. Shiv Kumar.
Hello, dear City Issaquah, City Mayor, and the council members. My name is Shiv Mutukumar. I am a resident of Issaquah. I'm also one of the pastors at Covenant Presbyterian Church of Issaquah on East Lake Sammamish. The address is 22116 Southeast 51st Place. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today on behalf of our church. And being a minister, I feel bound to speak from the Bible. If you will, please allow me to quote two verses. When Israel was exiled by God, God spoke through the prophet Jeremiah and said, "But seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you into exile, and pray to the Lord on its behalf, for in its welfare you will find your welfare." This is also the call of our church. We are committed to the welfare of the City of Issaquah. Now, when Jesus walked the earth, he said to his disciples, "Let the children come to me and do not hinder them, for to such belongs the kingdom of heaven." As a church, we are commanded to welcome children and to nurture them. So that's our twin mission, to bless the city and to welcome the children. We are a congregation of about 350 members that includes many young families. Our church property is used by two other churches with under 100 members each. Between these three churches, we have about 200 children under the age of 18. In addition, there are other mentoring services for children that are held at our church property. All this to say that our church property is filled with children ranging from infants to high school throughout the week, particularly on Sunday morning for worship, Sunday School, youth group, home school support groups, and choir practice throughout the week. As leaders and members of our church, with me is Ed Harper, who is one of the elders. We are deeply concerned regarding the proposed establishment of a retail marijuana store next door to us with the address 22106 Southeast 51st Place. We have two main safety concerns for our children. Firstly, the close proximity of marijuana to minors. The proposed site is adjacent to our church building, and please note that it is accessible today only via an easement through our property. Note that this easement was granted over 60 years ago for residential purpose only, and also this easement goes right next to the playground. So that's the second point of concern is the traffic safety. The increased retail customer traffic makes the easement accident-prone. The easement was granted only for residential use and for residential traffic. So in view of this, these two concerns, we as a church very humbly and respectfully oppose the retail marijuana store at its proposed location. We request the City Council and the mayor to help us ensure the safety of our children by not approving the store at this location or in close proximity to our church. And I just want to say thank you very much for what you do as leaders of our city, for making it a safe and an enjoyable place for us to live, to work, to play, and to worship. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Next person to speak? Ed Harper.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Again, my name is Ed Harper. I am an elder at CPC, and I wanted to present a letter to the council and some signatures from attenders and members of our church in support of the opposition. So if I could hand that—
That'd be great, Ed. You can hand it to Emily right here. Did you also want to address the council tonight?
Yes, just briefly, Your Honor. If I could, I'd like to introduce some of the attenders here with me. We have a few of the children that attend the mentoring services, Peter and Zarley Schmidt, and Grace Burt, and I'm sorry, Hannah. Thank you. And so these are just a few of the members of our mentoring services at our church that meet there during the week. Briefly about my history, and I'm very much, our church is very much in support of your proclamation today. I think it is more than ironic, and it's not a coincidence, that we planned to come here and that you had the proclamation on the same evening. It's not something we planned, but it couldn't have been more fortuitous. So thank you, Your Honor, for doing that. And we think we're at the front lines of stopping even substance abuse from starting for children such as this that might be exposed at a very young age. And as we know, the studies show that the increase in drug abuse happens when even pre-teen, if they're exposed to drugs. And so that's one major reason why we oppose that location. We understand the licensing issues with the state, and we think the churches should be included in a thousand-foot buffer, but that's the state law, and we understand. But we're taking steps in that regard as well. And personally, on a personal note, drug abuse has hit my family personally. I started out with five cousins, and I'm the youngest of those five, and I only have one left, and they've all died because of drug abuse or alcohol abuse, substance abuse, and they're all younger than 65. And I was a drug user too in high school because a friend introduced me to marijuana when I was in ninth grade. And it's affected me today, and I think it's hindered my growth as a person, and I still have regrets. Really, at the age of 14, children don't know what they're doing and what they're putting in their body. For personal—so my personal testimony is, please, do whatever you can to support this proclamation. We will do whatever we can to support the proclamation. Feel free to use our church. We have a great sanctuary. It seats 400 people. If you want to have meetings there, we're happy to open up our church for this type of thing. So please take it upon yourself to help us in stopping the spread of drugs, and one way you can do that is not allowing the Green Grotto to go right next door to our church.
Thank you for sharing your story, Ed.
Thank you.
Ishes, is there anyone else signed up? Cyrus Crone.
Good evening. My name's Cyrus Crone. I live at 300 Southeast Bush Street. I wasn't going to come in here and talk about this, but I'm struck by what I just heard. I was actually on my way to the brewhouse and then to listen to Yoda and to hear you and not being aware of the store being where it's being proposed. I think if there were a mosque or a temple or a synagogue or a church, everyone would be equally opposed to having something like that in their proximity. So I guess I stand in support of them, if you want to log me kind of ad hoc here. The real reason I came was to thank you for what you did with the streets. I emailed you recently. I came home in Old—I live in Old Town, and I came down, and all of the temporary speed humps had been removed, and then they put in these new ones that didn't look so good, so I was firing off emails. Russell, you probably heard this from citizens getting upset.
I want to make sure you address the council—
Yes, council, I apologize. So I just came to thank you because at first, it didn't seem like they were going to be beneficial, and in fact, they were. I came home early from work with my phone, and I was flagging it for a couple of hours, and my wife said, "How's it going?" And I turned to her and I said, "I actually think they work pretty well," and then I sent you an apology. So it's easy to lambast and get upset and give the council members a hard time. It's a lot harder to come in and say thank you, and I hope more people do it when they appreciate what you do. So, thank you very much.
That's fabulous, Cyrus. Thank you very much. Anyone else signed up? No. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to address the council? Come on up, Steve. Oh, Kathy, followed by Steve. You're up, Kathy.
Kathy McCory, 155 Northwest Gilman Boulevard. I'm the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce, and that's the first thing that I'd like to address this evening. I just want to thank all of you and all of the staff at the city. We're about to welcome a lot of guests to the community this weekend with Salmon Days, and it does truly take a village. So thank you, everyone, for supporting the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor Polly, for our proclamation today. City is officially fissequah for the next few days in celebration of Salmon Days. And again, our thanks for all of your support and everything that the city staff does to bring us Salmon Days. I'm also here today as a personal citizen, but also a recent appointee to visit Issaquah DMO Board of Directors. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on this exciting new board and to give you my commitment to make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that everyone's aware of the wonderful sights and sounds and values of Issaquah, and that we do our best to bring tourism to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Steve?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Steve Perera, Old Town for, I guess, it's about 11 years now. So I wanted to set in context, yes, first couple things. I wanted to thank both the Issaquah Highlands Council and the City Council or city leadership for recent legislation forums that were held, both in the Issaquah Highlands and here in the City Council. Democracy is a good thing, so I'm glad to see you had a chance to forum, have candidates present, and have questions answered. So thank you all. What brings me here today is the Old Town Neighborhood District Plan is going to come before one of the City Council Committee meetings, so I wanted to talk about that, but I wanted to talk about it with all of you instead of just with individual council subcommittees. And I wanted to tell two stories. The first was, in 1976, I became a teenager, but it's also the year that they introduced the bicentennial coins on the quarter, the 50-cent piece, the silver dollar, and the $2 bill. And for me, it was just kind of this idea, we hearken back and remember our roots, who we came from, where we are. And that kind of seems a setting for what the Old Town neighborhood is, a cultural business district. It's something that looks and feels unique and different. While there are a lot of good—so it's the first story, set in context. The second story was, sometimes we have a chance at night to walk around Issaquah when it's not raining and not overcast and look up and see the stars in the sky, and that kind of sense is kind of disappearing. That has immense value. I think we ought to consider that as one of the intrinsic values that is part of who Issaquah is and who we want to become and want to remember and not just have lost because two of the things that I dislike in the proposal are increasing to three stories and the increase in previous services from 65% to 95%. You're going to get a whole different look and scale and size and scope of buildings that aren't in keeping with that district. It's not within the scope of what the people that lived here when the central Issaquah plan was put up. We said this area is specifically excluded from it. It was not what the plan or the scope was. It's out of scope and character for the neighborhood. It's not what we were promised to put those increased scale and scope of buildings in that area. While there are a lot of good things in the plan, I don't think three stories or the increase in previous services is in keeping with what we were promised and what we're committed to, and I'm looking to all of you to kind of help rein that back in. Another thing that stands out a lot of times in the document, it talks about how to do these things in conjunction with the Downtown Issaquah Association, and I'm glad to see they're involved, but I don't like to see them called out so much that they're having a large driving vision. I'd like to see the neighborhoods involved. I'd like to see the neighbors involved. I'd like to have them called out just as much as stakeholders as Downtown Issaquah Association because they have a scope and a vision and a plan for what they want, and that's having too large of a scope and a scale for what this area deserves or wants to be. So I would like your help in kind of curtailing that or at least making sure that that is reflective of what the whole neighborhood and community wants and not just what DIA wants. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Jeff, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. I want to echo what Kathy said. I was recently added to the board of the DMO, which is going to be Visit Issaquah, and I just want to say that we have assembled a really great group of people, talented, solid individuals who have diverse backgrounds, that all have the same vision of bringing visitors to Issaquah, both to see what we have to offer from a retail and business standpoint as well as recreation around the area and the region, and to possibly bring new ideas, events, and other things to the area that will drive more and more people around, not just the Seattle area, but all over the country, to come over and visit our wonderful place. So I just wanted to thank you guys for your support. I know it's been a long time coming that this board has been, you know, working to get together, and as we move forward, we're going to be good stewards of the funds that are coming our way to do the right things and grow the interest in this city. So thank you very much.
Before you leave, I know who you are, but for the record—
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Can you state your name and address and relationship to the city?
I've forgotten who I am. My name is Jeff Walker, and I have an office at 58 East Sunset Way, Issaquah, 98027. And I'm also the chairman of the Urban Village Development Commission, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the DMO. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Holly. My residential address is 1328 254th Place Southeast. Technically, Sammamish sometimes comes up as Issaquah, depending on your search tool. I've been a resident of this area, originally Issaquah, living in Clohany for about six years. And I have also been appointed to the Visit Issaquah Board along with Jeff and Kathy and a few others here tonight. So they've already kind of spoken to what we're all about. I'm really excited to be part of this board, and I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you for your support.
Really nice. Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Second call and last call for anyone who would like to address the council this evening. I want to thank all of you who took the time to talk with your council tonight and myself. We all recognize how hard it is to get up on a microphone, especially on camera. It was great to hear from three different folks about the Visit Issaquah Organization, which is on our agenda as an item this evening, and also to get to talk, get a reintroduction to Republic, and to hear from some Covenant Presbyterian Church members talking about land use decisions, hearing from folks about speed control and Salmon Days and our Old Town Plan. Thank you all so much for coming in and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Now that audience comments are closed, we'll move to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September 20th, I attended the RIAA Salmon Recovery Council meeting, and we had two action items. The first one was recommending investment to conduct a feasibility study of options for addressing elevated temperature and low oxygen in the Lake Washington Shipping Canal. Salmon require well-oxygenated water and cold water, so the conditions in the shipping canal are a concern, and it was recommended to have a review synthesis of the data and literature, and then convene up to four stakeholder workshops on this topic. The second action item was to review and consider the 2018 RIAA Project Subcommittee Grant Funding, and there is a list of the projects that are recommended, and there's a lot of detail in that list, and it's available on the RIAA Salmon Recovery website. But one thing that was interesting is that the funds for Puget Sound, the funds are for Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Grants, and they come from the state capital budget. The allocation of grant funds entailed a trade or swap of fund between RIAA 8 and other RIAs. So in this case, there was less than the full amount allocated within RIAA 8, and so they swapped funding with RIAA 7 and RIAA 14. And then in a future grant round, it will be returned back to RIAA 8. So I thought that was an interesting swap of funding for a number of very important restoration and acquisition And then the Salmon Recovery Council Funding Board recommended several projects, including Meadowdale Beach Park and Estuary Restoration and Willamore Floodplain Restoration. We also heard from the Army Corps of Engineers about recent funding awarded by Congress for Ballard Lock repairs. This is an issue that has been very important for salmon recovery, and the funding will be used to replace large lock valves and machinery. The next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be Thursday, November 15, and will be at the Mercer Island Community Center. And then I also have a new regional commitment, which will be as an alternate on the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. And so the next meeting of the King Conservation District Advisory Committee will be October 17 at 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center, and that will be my first meeting on the committee. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Great. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Services and Safety Committee had a special meeting on September 18, and we had three items on the agenda. We heard Agenda Bill 7640, which is amending school impact fees, Agenda Bill 7655, Expedited Traffic Enforcement Pilot Project Summary Report, an extension, and we also received a most enlightening report from City Administrator Moon entitled "City Gives," which described the various ways the city supports our nonprofit community. It was very helpful to see all the different avenues that we have and how they come together into a package of support. The next meeting is— The next meeting is Services and Safety. It will be on October 9th at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers, and the agenda has not yet been set. Eastside Fire and Rescue, the next Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting will be on October 11th, and the agenda has not been set. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on September 20th, last Thursday, and there were four items on the agenda. Two of them were informational updates, one on Providence Point and the other one on Newport Way Northwest regarding retaining walls. We had two items of action that are on the consent agenda tonight. AB 7646, the amendment to sewer rates for the city, and also AB 7339, the Holiday and lift station. Both those are on consent. On the 19th, I attended the Regional Transit Committee meeting, and we had a couple items there of interest. One is talking about the development of the Metro 1920 budget. And the good news is they're having a budget. The bad news is it's not as much going to the expanding the system as they'd like. So that's not on the course we would like to have it on, but we'll keep pushing on them on that. Another thing on there is bus base capacity, and they need more bus bases. That is a limiting factor in expansion of metro transit. There's just no more place to park or maintain buses, and so they're working very diligently on getting at least one more base and a second one eventually as well. So they gave us the plans on how they're trying to get that done. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor Hawley. Land and Shore Committee meets this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers. And on the agenda, we will be getting a report, Central Izua Monitoring Report and Dashboard, Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan, and Agenda Bill 7661, Proposed Amendments to Central Standards Table 4.3B, which has permitted land uses. And that's my report.
Thank you. Council President Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, October 10th, at 7:00 p.m. in Renton City Hall. The pre-pick workshop that's starting at 6:00 p.m. is going to be a focus group on homelessness with Future Laboratories. Future Laboratories is going to invite SCA members to participate in a focus group around shifting homeless systems to a customer-driven rather than a funder-driven model for the purpose of improving equity and impact. Sound Cities members have a unique and valuable perspective in approaching regional and systematic solutions. Future Labs would like to ask for your expertise in approaching homelessness in Seattle and King County. And this is, as with all pre-pick meetings, open to all city council members. So if anybody is interested in attending. I don't actually know much about Future Laboratories, so this should be interesting. I plan on being there, but if anybody wants to join me, you're welcome. There's two potential action items. One is the 2019 SCA Legislative Agenda. I'll be addressing that in For Good or the Order. And there's also a placeholder for Regional Affordable Housing Task Force. I don't believe that we have specific bill in front of us yet, but as soon as we do, I will let everybody know. That concludes my report.
Thank you. For the mayor's report, we are trying out a slightly different format tonight, so feel free to comment on it at For Good or the Order or after the meeting. There is no executive session this evening. In addition to the proclamation I presented earlier this evening, I wanted to let you know about two additional proclamations that were issued for October 2018. This is Domestic Violence Action Month, and I urge all citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support LifeWire's efforts to prevent and end domestic abuse in our community. And as was mentioned in the audience comments, it is Fish aqua weekend coming up. Earlier today, at the Izua Salmon Hatchery, I issued a proclamation declaring the first weekend of October 2018 to be known as -- Izua will be known as Fish aqua in honor of the Izua Salmon Days Festival this weekend. This month, we are beginning the deliberation phase of our budget development season. This afternoon, City Administrator Moon sent council members our budget in brief publication, which provides a very high-level snapshot of the total preliminary budget and the budget calendar. In addition, we sent a fund-level summary of total anticipated revenues and expenditures to the council. Budget in brief will be posted on the city's budget webpage. Official click-off of council's work on the preliminary budget will be during the October 15th regular city council meeting, where I will deliver the budget message and the entire proposed budget to the city council and the community. Budget presentations and council review sessions begin on October 22nd. On September 22nd, a new teen center called the Garage Teen Cafe, located -- there we go. Located adjacent to the City of Izua Community Center in Old Town, held its grand opening. We are so proud to partner with Kaylee, Jake, and Barb D. Michelle and Friends to make this reality in Izua. Council President Tola Mertz conducted the ribbon cutting for the well-attended event. We're also checking back in with our community right now on the progress on Our Izua, our strategic plan. And we have launched a survey on our website that went live last Wednesday. Please tell us if we are on the right track by taking a brief survey found at isiquawa.gov/ourizua. I know it's disappointing to have our beloved and well-used community center close, but the new flooring project is awesome. A couple more coats of stain over the next week or two while the new flooring on the second floor -- we will be getting a couple of new coats of stain and working on the flooring on the second floor of the community center. The second floor track and fitness area will be getting a new synthetic flooring surface while the rainier room on the second floor will be getting hardwood. There will be some activity relocations when we reopen to make sure we schedule activities that are well-matched with our new facility flooring. This project is on schedule and within budget, and it will be back -- the community center will be back open for everyone's use on November 13th. In April, the city completed a traffic calming pilot study in the Old Town Neighborhood. The pilot study showed that temporary traffic calming in Old Town was providing the expected results in terms of reduced speeds, and I'm pleased to let you know that the permanent installation was completed last week. The areas improved included streets both north and south of Sunset Way. Speed humps are designed for little to no discomfort at low speeds but will cause discomfort at higher speeds. Our next steps will be to remove temporary traffic circle at 5th and Andrews and replace it with a traffic circle this fall. And in November, after all the traffic calming has been installed, the city will continue to monitor speed and traffic data to confirm that the devices are reducing speeds and volumes. The project is within budget but was slightly delayed this summer by a contractor's strike. On Friday, September 28th, the city and its contractor combined construction completed structural strengthening of the Newport Way Bridge over Tibbetts Creek. The work included installation of carbon fiber strips which were attached to the underside of the structure, a technique that allows work to be completed under the bridge avoiding traffic impacts. The work was performed to ensure water quality was protected as the material was applied. The expeditious completion of this project enabled the city to avoid posting load restrictions at this bridge. This project was completed on schedule and under budget. And lastly, it's salmon days. It is the 49th year. This October 6th and 7th, we will celebrate one of Izua's greatest treasures, that annual return of the salmon. Look for the city's booth where you can take your photo with Sasquatch, and visit izua-chamber.com to learn more about all the different events, vendors, shuttles, concerts, and carnivals and more. And that concludes the mayor's report. Proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Can I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, my move to adopt the consent calendar is listed in this evening's published agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. The next and only item on regular business this evening is AB 7631, Visit Izua Destination Marketing Organization Bylaws. This item is coming out of the Council Services and Safety Committee, and I'd like to invite Economic Development Manager Tim Dutter to make a presentation.
Good evening, council members, mayor, administration. We're here tonight to discuss -- Economic Development Manager for the city, Tim Dutter. We're here tonight to discuss the bylaws of the Visit Izua organization. This being the only item, I wasn't sure if I should be excited or terribly nervous.
We're excited.
But I'm excited. I'm going to go with excited. We have four board members in the audience tonight. Quinn's actually is here as well, so I'm excited to have their support and have them here. So if we go back in May, I was directed to file the Articles of Incorporation and to form that panel of five members to choose the Board of Directors. When they did that, they created slots through the bylaws of certain positions that they wanted to have filled. And if you look to the right, if you can tell I'm kind of a visual person, you see who is represented in those slots. From the two hotels, we have Will Parkinson and Quinn Pham. Marketing Representative would be Jeff Walker. The restaurants are still in the process of finding that individual. I believe Will is making progress on that. The two amenities and attractions, Jennifer Finks from our Parks Department is represented because our parks are one of our amenities and attractions, and then Ron Fall to represent the outdoor biking industry. The local association is the Chamber of Commerce with our CEO Kathy McCory. And then four at-large members, Sarah Hawley, Patty Hagar, and Fab Raziat. There's still two seats open that they need to pursue or that they can pursue. They still have a restaurant seat open, and they still have one at-large member still to be placed in a position. The bylaws, the Board of Directors, their first term will begin on December 1st. Just because we had to buy some time, I didn't know how long it would take that panel to form the board, so their official date will start on December 1st. And then at that -- they've already chosen that they're serving two or three years' terms, and then after that, every term's a three-year term. Like most Board of Directors, they have a chair, a vice chair. They wanted me to combine the treasurer and the secretary, so that was done. And then their meetings call for no less than nine annually, which buys them a little bit of wiggle room. I would assume that they would meet 12 times a year, but sometimes things come up and, you know, if you don't have a quorum, sometimes you don't always have those meetings. So that gives them a little freedom in that area. So this went to Services and Safety, and it was presented at Services and Safety, and it was voted on, and it went through 3-0. At that meeting, Councilmember Hunt asked me if I had sought legal review on the bylaws. I made a mistake. I had sought Jim's advice. Jim and I had talked about the Articles of Incorporation, certain portions of the bylaws, but I hadn't gotten them in front of the clerks and in front of Jim for complete review. So when we did that, like most attorneys, he caught some inconsistency. And they're fairly minor. What we discussed was, is this organization an independent nonprofit organization, or is it a sub-agency of the city? And we decided it's a nonprofit independent organization. So once we had clarified that, then we needed to go back, and these are the changes that we had to make, that they don't need to -- I had my mind in LTAC row when I wrote the RCW to public notice meetings, just like the LTAC has to and most of our commissions do. But they don't need to because they're a nonprofit independent organization. So they have the choice to do that. They can hold open public meetings, but they don't have to. So we cut that out of the bylaws. The second part, dissolution at the very end of the bylaws called for the city to approve if the organization was going to dissolve, but since it's not a sub-agency of the city, that didn't make sense as well. So we took that portion out. And then the third and final portion was, again, had to do with dissolution, basically changing the language of that so that it matched the state law.
Great.
I have one more slide. The next steps for the DMO, develop their 2019 budget requests to the LTAC. They've already done that. They've requested their budget. It's in. Secure the funding from this year. We need to get them -- we need to move the funds from the city coffers into their account, which we're in the process of doing through the Economic Development Department. They need to amend these bylaws on October 17th. I wanted them to get them amended before, because they've already adopted them. They adopted them June 20th, August 1st?
Yeah.
Okay. They'd already adopted them, so I wanted to get them to amend them before I came here tonight, but the bylaws say you have to give 10 days' notice. So hopefully, they will adopt these at October 17th, these amendments. And then complete the job description for the executive director and post his position, and then to hire their executive director. So they're moving quickly. I know they want -- put in a lot of effort. I want to thank all of the board members. I want to thank the panel for moving so quickly. I know you guys are meeting every two weeks, so thank you for all of your time and effort in this. Questions?
Thank you, Tim. Questions? Chris, as Chair of Services, did you have any additional information to add?
No, I'll wait until we make a movement, or a motion.
Are there questions? Councilmember Hunt.
So regarding the change for dissolution, could you go back to that?
Sure.
Slide, please. What does it mean at the end when it says "membership clarified under dissolution"?
Sure. So do you remember when we discussed at the Services and Safety that it has to be a membership-based organization? The membership consists of the Board of Directors, but at any given time in the future, they can add additional members. For example, if the City of Sumamish wanted to become a member, they could write a procedure and a process for what that looks like to include other members, but for now, it's just the Board of Directors. So when we read the language, and Jim might have to clarify some of this for me, when we read the language, it said that to dissolve, the Board of Directors means to make a recommendation to the membership to dissolve. And that wouldn't make sense if you didn't have any other membership besides the Board of Directors. So the language that is stated in your PAC, it basically says, if no other membership exists besides the Board of Directors, then that recommendation is final.
Okay. And with the -- if they did choose to have additional members beyond the Board of Directors, what role would they have?
It would be up to the Board of Directors to design what that looks like. But to make it a C6, it had to be membership-based. So when I worked with other DMOs and did some research, basically, they're all 501(c)(6) because the (c)(3) are reserved for charitable organizations, religious organizations, and educational organizations, which this doesn't necessarily fall under. They might grab aspects of the educational components, but they need to be a (c)(6). So when I'm speaking to the other DMOs, they use the board as the members. Membership-based organizations, they could do it a number of different ways. They could create criteria and a process and an application process, or approach certain partners, however they want to do it. But at this time, the membership is just the Board of Directors. It leaves that door open.
Okay. And then one more question on the dissolution. It says the assets of Visit Izua shall be distributed in accordance with state law. Could you elaborate a little bit on what that would look like?
All right, Jim. So let me see if I've got this right. First, all the debts get paid off. Everything goes back to where it's supposed to go. What's the third one? Charitable organizations?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay.
I'll tell you in a second.
While Jim is looking, are there any other questions? Okay, then we'll wait for the answer.
Okay, so the first is that all of the debts get paid. That's the first thing that happens. Then after that, assets which are held by the corporation and which were given to the corporation on condition that they be returned if the corporation ever dissolved. Those go back to those organizations that gave them. Third is any assets which are permitted to be used only for charitable purposes go to charities. Fourth, other assets would be distributed then in accordance with any provisions in the Articles of Incorporation. The Articles of Incorporation can have provisions in them. And then last, if there's anything left over after all of that, any remaining assets can be distributed to corporations, whether profit or nonprofit, as specified by a plan of distribution adopted by the Board of Directors. So there's a specific hierarchy in state law as to how you distribute the assets, and rather than repeating all of that in here, and particularly because it could, I suppose, change, although it hasn't since 1967, we just decided to say that it would be distributed as provided in state law.
Thank you. One more. Go ahead, Councilmember Hunt.
Could you explain why the secretary and the treasurer are together as one position?
Yeah, that was a request made from the Board of Directors. I believe at this time that they just didn't want to create too many slots, too many officers. So they just requested that I combine the treasurer and the secretary as one person. I would imagine down the road, that could change under their bylaws. But being in startup mode, it might make sense to have that person do both of those tasks. And she's here tonight.
Any other questions? Tim, I wonder if you could use -- had mentioned that there was some positions that were yet to be filled.
Yeah.
Would you be able to tell the council how those positions get advertised? People find out about?
So, sure. So in the Services and Safety, I put the slide out of how the public notice went out. We used our channels, the chambers' channels, to put out the information that these positions are open. They did application process. That process did close, so I would have to defer to the board to ask how they're letting people to know that.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Do have one.
Oh, Councilmember Ray.
So, Tim, how many applications did we get for board membership?
So, Tim, how many applications did we get for board membership?
Thirty? Around thirty?
Oh.
Great, thank you.
There's no other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a slight modification from the language that's included here. And move to have the City Council endorse the Visit Issaquah bylaws with the recommended amendments as shown in Exhibit C to the agenda bill.
Did I get you to say that one more time? City Council to endorse?
I would move to have the Issaquah City Council endorse the Visit Issaquah bylaws with the recommended amendments as shown in Exhibit C to the agenda bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any issue with the adjustment? Artisha, sorry. Great. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ray?
I just want to make a couple of comments on this. I'm really excited about this opportunity. There was a lot of work that went into taking this concept forward and getting us to this place that we're at right now. I think that it will really help us share our community with others near and far as we start to draw in a larger base of visitors to our community. It's going to take a great deal of effort and work to achieve the mission of Visit Issaquah. This is no small feat. And as a community, our success is rooted in inclusion and working together and openly. And so as this organization goes forward, it's my firm belief that its success will be rooted in that collaboration and openness. And I'm excited that we're ready to launch Visit Issaquah. It's been a long time. And then finally, I just want to recognize and thank Tim Dutter for the work that he has done in shepherding this concept through to completion. So thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt, you had your hand up.
Thank you. I, I wanted to make one comment, which is that I think that DIA, the Downtown Issaquah Association, they are a very important part of tourism currently in Issaquah. They organize a lot of events and have a lot of knowledge about why people are coming to Issaquah as visitors and, and how to make their place, make their stay pleasant. And I think that involving them in some way is important. When it, when this came up in the services and safety meeting, I asked if there was a connection between this organization and Downtown Issaquah, and it sounded to me like there isn't. And I really think that it is important that, that there is a way for Visit Issaquah to work with DIA. So that, that's one concern that I have. And then the other thing is, I, I understand the reasoning for why the secretary and the treasurer would be combined. I think that with the number of board directors, just, it would be my suggestion that positions not combined too much because I think that different people on the Board of Directors could play those different roles as they're laid out in the bylaws. And I, I also know that the bylaws can change over time and probably will change over time. And the last thing is that with the, with those last two positions, I hope that there is a real outreach effort and that there, it sounds like there has been a lot of interest in the community for all of the positions, and hopefully that continues. I, I think that there are a lot of other skills that could be brought in, and I'm, I'm overall very excited to see what the Visit Issaquah organization does. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I think this is great. Like I say, we've been looking forward to getting this going for quite a while. The question, just to clarify some things, you said that, I think that's pretty clear that this is going to be their own separate entity. So as you said, the council will not have any kind of, you know, legal connection and all. They're going to be doing stuff, of course, it will work together as needed whenever possible. And I just wondering what the difference, Councilmember Ray, and originally with support versus endorse, because they're going to go forward and do this, and we're basically just, at this point, just, you know, saying, yes, go forward, but we have no authority except we're letting the world know we're behind them.
That's a Councilmember Ray question.
Yes.
I, I felt like endorse was a stronger verb than was support, and I wanted to use that stronger word.
All right.
Nice.
Go forth and do good work.
Go forth and do good work. Any other comments or questions before we call for the vote? Okay. All those in favor of the Issaquah City Council endorsing the Visit Issaquah bylaws with the recommended amendments as shown in Exhibit C to the agenda bill, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is good of the order, and I know the Council President Martz has already said that he has at least one item for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at the last council meeting, I referred to a one-page, basically a one-pager that was the SCA legislative, the proposed SCA 2018, legislative agenda for the 2019 year. And I asked council members to take a look at that. There are three main items, three main elements to it, adjusting the property tax cap, investing in public health services, and addressing the housing and homelessness crisis. And so what I want to ask you this evening is if you have any feedback that you want me to convey to PIC when we discuss this, because it's my expectation that there will be a motion to move this as written to be the PIC legislative agenda. So just wondering if anybody has any thoughts or concerns? Councilmember Ray looks, no?
I'm just being attentive.
I appreciate, I appreciate you being attentive. I just usually have a thought on any topic that we're discussing. No? All right. Well, then I will assume.
It works well with the stuff we have on our legislative agenda as well, which is great. That's SCA's way. They have a great pulse on what the cities are interested in working on.
I completely agree, so I'm glad. It sounds like we're pretty good. Councilmember Hunt, did you have a, yes?
It's more of a question. So with the, with the 1% cap, it talks about how the, that the tax is a revenue source for supporting critical services, so was there a discussion about potential impact on critical services or?
Well, I think it's an ongoing conversation at PIC about how the 1% basically steers, when you're trying to look for additional monies, it basically steers away from some of the more progressive forms of taxation. So this, this one has sort of a long history with municipalities feeling like this, this hinders the ability to have a comprehensive conversation about where we're going to fund the things that we want to, that we want to offer our citizens. Does that answer your question?
It's a very good question that we will revisit during budget deliberations as we talk about new revenues and what we collect, what we anticipate collecting, and what you will be able to purchase for services and that. So that's a really great question that you will revisit during our budget talks.
I mean, I'll say this one hits established communities harder than growing communities, right? I think Issaquah sees a lot of funding options that, you know, cities like, you know, Shoreline that are just further along and, and have less growth occurring. You know, I mean, some, some growth is occurring throughout the county, but different municipalities have, have different amounts of it. And this 1%, there's a lot of communities for whom that is the primary source of revenue, and so the 1% really, really, really constrains the conversation they can have about what services to, to offer.
Any other good of the order? I have a couple of items I was going to add.
Thanks.
Thank you. Both Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Ramos, and myself attended two different Ruckus House Roadmap to Washington's Future. Bill and I happened to attend the one together, and I thought I would just give you a, kind of a quick update on what Bill and I had heard and the kind of conversation we participated in. The question is, is this working the way we thought it should, Growth Management Act? And it was structured around what is specifically working and what is not working, and what data and information we may need to have in order to make some policy, recommended policy changes. What is specifically working, the couple of big things that came up were holding the line and preventing sprawl, which ended up resulting in preserving open space and rural space. That's the obvious. That's what it wanted to do, and it did do that. What is not working, had a few more points to it. Decision-making is very complicated and has many layers. It's a very problematic system. There's a one-size-fits-all approach, whether you're in the center of a growing area or at the edge of it. Infrastructure, schools, and utilities are currently not keeping up in pace, and they are not supported by state dollars. So there, we are lagging, and we're not seeing funding sources for that. And not connecting the dots between where the residential growth is occurring and where the jobs are being added, meaning we have missing transportation modes, missing capacity links, and we don't have a funding strategy for that. Need, what kind of data, what, what kind of data? We need data on what has happened in the last 25 years. So where did the housing get added since GMA came? Where did the jobs get added? Can we see a geographic distribution of where transportation investments have been made on the same layer as where jobs and housing have been created? And how did land economics impact growth patterns? So understanding a bit more of the economics for it. Schools are having a hard time not only finding land but affording land, and that's not going to get better, and we're not near where we thought we'd be in terms of our size. And the economics of why did the housing end up so far away from the jobs? Why was there no link between where job creation was happening? So that was kind of a high-level, Bill, if you can think of anything else that came up that I thought I'd share. And the other one was, I had come to you with three Cascade policy questions for their budget. Cascade wanted to go to biennial rates, biennial connection charges, and to start a reserve for emergency preparedness. We had a, Issaquah had a bit of a concern that biennial rates might give us a cash flow hit in a year where we might turn part of our system off and buy more water. And while it went through, there is provisions in there for smoothing. Smoothing's a word we seem to hear a lot of lately. Nobody had an issue with biennial connection rates. We all thought that was a great idea. And I misspoke when I talked about their resiliency fund. This was really not a new fund, setting aside some ending fund balance for a new reserve. It was actually taking money from a reserve they have called RISK and putting it in one they called resiliency while they work on the policy languages to how that will be spent and how to coordinate with jurisdictions. And then the only other one correction I wanted to make, I think in a meeting that Councilmember Hunt attended, there had been mentioned that there had been an audit finding, and actually what, there had, there was no audit finding for Cascade. I don't even know if they've ever had an audit finding, but they did have a recommendation for a best management practice, so I just wanted to clear that up. And then the last thing I had was some upcoming council meetings, unless somebody else has a good of the order item they want to share. October 8th is a council work session, and the items include the Arch parody update conversation, Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank presentation, and Eastside Fire and Rescue budget overview. And on October 15th, council work session at 5:00 p.m., dinner will be provided. The agenda items include strategic plan, goal statements, and objectives. And October 15th, regular council meeting, agenda items include proposed 2019 budget, mayor's presentation, public hearing on the vacation of a portion of Northeast Gilman Boulevard, and amending school impact fees. Anything else?
Could you repeat the time? Which one's starting at 5:00 o'clock?
The October 15th council work session will start at 5:00, and dinner will be provided. There is no executive session this evening, and so if there is no further business, we're, aw, darn it, 8:04. Not going to do it. We will be adjourned at 8:04.
So the 15th is the work session also?